Well, good evening and welcome to the Tempe City Council, Regular Council Meeting for August 9th, 2018, here in the Herry E. Mitchell Government Center. Can everyone please rise and join us for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to make an announcement that Vice Mayor Cubey is with us via phone. Vice Mayor, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. Next item is approval of the council meeting minutes, Councilmember Granville.
Thank you, Mayor. I've moved to approve item 3A, 1 through 4.
It's been moved by Councilmember Granville. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Navarro. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes 7 to 0. Councilmember Granville.
I've moved to approve meeting minutes 3B, 1 through 9.
It's been moved by Councilmember Granville. Is there a second? It's been seconded by Councilmember Navarro. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Next is our reports and announcements. I'm going to come down to the podium. Well, I'm excited to have here this evening Jeff Kraus. Jeff, not only is he owner of a very successful popular crepe bar in South Tempe, but is also a competitor on the TV network show Chopped. Before calling you up to receive your proclamation, I understand you have some samples and a video telling us a little bit more about your experiences here in Tempe and on Chopped. So let's go ahead and look at the video screen if we can, Jeff.
I'm Jeff Kraus. I am the chef-owner of Crepe Bar. I think finally, for the first time in the last maybe 12 months specifically, people are looking at Tempe and South Tempe specifically as just a gem. This is a family-oriented environment. And looking around, I picked breakfast and lunch because that's my passion, but I also picked it because there wasn't very many options around here that was organically or like house-made or homemade or, you know, farm-focused or farm-driven. I started off small and here we are six years later and I have grown double. And it's one of those things where I just have realized that if I cultivate the seed that I've planted and focus more on the staff and the culture of it, growth is going to happen inevitably. Crepe Bar has been open six years. Prior to that, I had a food truck for two years. And if you feel like you're a big fish in a small bowl, you have to jump out and, you know, be something, just push yourself to the next level, right? And that was, for me, Chopped. You know, I'm at a place where I'm pretty comfortable and pretty successful on the local scene and I just wanted to take it to the national level and lead by example. And that's what motivated me to be on Chopped. I definitely have seen an influx in business since the national exposure. And I think what's next for me is really focusing on some of my passion projects. And there's a couple of concepts that I want to do that I think will be perfect. So I thought Chopped in the media would be that thing that would push me to jump out of my bowl for what I hope is to come, which is much more than me getting chopped in the first round, which I'm glad I kind of did, but it just makes me want to be better.
All right, let's give a round of applause to Jeff Kraus. We're honored to have you here in our council chambers this evening, but we're also honored to have you in the Crepe Bar Restaurant in the great city of Tempe. So thank you, Jeff. With that, I have a proclamation I'd like to read for you. It states, "Whereas Chef Jeff Kraus is the highly skilled chef-owner of Crepe Bar Restaurants in South Tempe..." Jeff, could you please come forward? And if a council unit would like to come down and join us, that'd be great. So Chef Jeff Kraus is the highly skilled chef-owner of Crepe Bar Restaurant in South Tempe. And whereas Jeff Kraus' talents and perseverance qualified him to compete against some of the nation's top chefs on the Food Network Show, Chopped. And whereas Jeff Kraus represents the growth and flavor and vitality of our Tempe food scene with his amazing crepe dishes. And whereas Crepe Bar is a Tempe success story, going from a food truck to a neighborhood staple in just six years, winning several major culinary awards along the way. And whereas Jeff Kraus' exemplary entrepreneur spirit, philosophy of doing business, and culinary skills are commendable. Now therefore, I, Mark Mitchell, Mayor of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare it's August 9th, 2018, as Jeff Kraus Crepe Bar Day in Tempe, Arizona. Tell me your location. Tell me where your location is.
Oh, man. This is cool. So amazing. Location is 7520 South Rural Street, South Tempe. Rural and Elliott's, the intersection. Phew, it's an honor. I'm super stoked to even have an opportunity to do business. And, you know, I just want to thank you. I want to thank the city of Tempe. I want to thank my Crepe Bar, you know, friends, my staff, my team. Because without, you know, without them and the energy that, you know, the culture, you know, puts towards, you know, making Crepe Bar happen, none of this would even be existing. So thank you so much. It's a humbling and motivating experience.
Thank you. All right, thank you. All right. You guys all know you're going to have crepes this weekend, right? All right, with that, I have one more announcement. Appointments to our boards and commissions. Item 5A1, the council will be voting to approve the appointment of Brian Jackson to the Industrial Development Authority and also Austin Marshall to the Judicial Advisory Board. Mr. Man, do you have any announcements?
None tonight, thank you, Mayor.
All right, with that, we are going to go ahead and move into our consent agenda. All the items listed on the consent agenda will be considered as a group and will be enacted with one motion by the city council unless an item is removed for separate consideration. Members of the audience may remove public hearing items for separate consideration. Public hearing items are designated by an asterisk. Councilmembers may remove any item for separate consideration. If you do wish to speak on an item, on a public hearing item, please fill out a speaker's card, which can be found in the back of the council chambers and hand it to our assistant, our deputy city clerk. And then I'll call your name and it's your turn for public comment. Miscellaneous items, items 5A1 through 5A9. Awards and bids and contracts, items 5B1 through 5B27. Resolutions, items 5C1 through item 5C11. Again, any items that is marked with an asterisk is a public hearing item and it can be removed for separate consideration. If anyone would like to have a public hearing item removed, I do have some cards. So I'll start with the cards that I do have. And if you have, anyone in the audience wants to pull an item that is a public hearing item, just please get my attention and fill out a speaker's card. The first one I have is Jared regarding hot pot and barbecue. Please come forward.
Mayor, did you want to address the remainder of the consent agenda? Or would you like to address this first?
Let me do that first. I apologize. Hang on one second. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Are there any items listed for removal? And we do have those. Councilmember Granville?
Thank you. Mayor, item 5B9, 5C4, and 5C5.
Okay, and I do have 5A5 is being pulled as well. So right now, we have 5A5. We have 5B9, 5C4, and 5C5. Is there any others from the council? And I don't have any other cards. Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as read, with the exception of 5A5, 5B9, 5C4, 5C5? It's moved by Councilmember Keating, seconded by Councilmember Arredondo Savage. Please vote. Vice Mayor?
Yes, aye.
That motion carries 7 to 0. Next one is item 5A5, which is "The Holy Public Hearing to Recommend Denial of a Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License for Ching Cuisine LLC, DBA as Hot Pot and Barbecue at 937 East Broadway Road, Suite Number 2." Jared and Jamian, please come forward. State your name and place of residence for the record. Yes?
My name is Jared Michael Repinsky. My address is 3612 West Harrison Road in Chandler.
Oh, my name's Jimmy Dai, the owner of the Hot Pot Barbecue.
Okay, just a couple of things. Essentially, hopefully you have the background on this, that an interim permit, he was operating under an interim permit and there were some underage violations that occurred. The Director of the Department of Liquor canceled the interim permit. He withdrew his application. At that point, Mr. Dai came to me to see if he could reapply because people were recommending that he wait a year to reapply. He had noticed that business had dropped, kind of significantly not having a liquor license. Some people were telling him he couldn't reapply because he had a license revoked and the state statute said you can't apply for a liquor license once you've got a license revoked, which is inaccurate because the interim permit was canceled, it wasn't revoked. You can't revoke an interim permit. So that's when I came into play. And I just want to, you know, let the council know, I'm not just an agent, I'm also a trainer. I'm a Title IV trainer. And one of the things that I've noticed in Title IV training is when you have a foreign-born person that has born and raised in another country, a lot of times when they come here, the 21 years of age in order to consume, purchasing and consuming alcohol is strength. It's weird. But that's when we come in as trainers, we put the fear of God into them, we orientate them to the laws. We make sure that they understand, well, this is the way it is. And in Arizona, we don't like people violating our laws and we also like putting people in jail when they do. However, in Mr. Dai's case, he was issued the interim permit and he was scheduled to take a training, a classroom training, with the training organization, different from myself, at that time. And the violation occurred prior to him acquiring the training. The second thing that I would say in regards to Title IV training, when you're dealing with people whom which our English isn't their first language, is that when you're in a classroom training, you have people like me that rattle off statute, you know, the definitions within the statute and things of that nature. And you have to do it in a three-hour amount of time because that's usually what the state requires. We've got a lot of topics and the classroom moves quickly. And for people with English as their first language, they're going to pick up on all that. They're going to be able to understand it and stuff like that. Since then, I've been able to give Mr. Dai access to an online training where he's able to slowly, methodically go through, read, absorb, understand. And then after he completes the online program, he goes over it again, you know? So he's had plenty of opportunities to learn and understand Title IV in its entirety. Almost lastly, I mean, my second-to-last point is, when we're talking about a temporary interim permit, like for instance, what Mr. Dai had been accused of in resulting in the original complaint from the Department of Liquor was on March 29, 2018. He had failed to follow identification procedures prescribed in statutes. He sold to an underage and then the owner allowed an underage person on premise when the primary function was alcohol, which is a very questionable violation, but we're not going to debate that. So those were the three counts. If he had a license, those three counts, he would have had a fine. He would have moved on with his life and everybody would move on. He would have learned from it. But he wouldn't have been, it wouldn't have been a revocation. It wouldn't have called into question his capability, qualify, and reliability requirements within statute. So therefore, it seems strange that right now, that's essentially what we're doing here. We're saying that Mr. Dai is not capable, qualified, and reliable in order to possess a liquor license, even though not too far from here, over a nine-month period, there was an establishment that allowed an underage to possess, had an employee consuming on duty, had allowed disorderly person to remain on premise, two counts of that, failure to follow identification procedures, and sold to an underage. All that within a nine-month period. However, their capability qualifications and reliability weren't causing the question. They're still operating under an active license. They paid their fine, which is considerably less than what Mr. Dai was accused of. Lastly, his criminal, you know, because he was cited under the Criminal Code as well, that was dismissed in its entirety. So he was not found criminally responsible for these violations. So therefore, we come to you just to ask, just give him a chance. You know, give him a chance to learn, understand what he did wrong. We're not trying to justify it. We're not trying to debate what he did wrong. We know what he did. That's why he came to me. How am I going to be able to learn and do and make this right? And that's basically all he's trying to do, is make this right so he can be a member and, you know, business community here in the city of Tempe for many years to come.
Thank you. Okay. Any comments or questions from the council? If not, can we get a staff come forward and explain to the council the rationale and the process and the options? Okay. But to your right, there you go.
Sorry. Mayor and council, my name is Bruce Smith. I'm the licensing supervisor and the one that submitted the RevCA on the agenda. There's a couple of things I'm going to bring just to your attention. The city of Tempe, or any of the cities, do not in fact issue a liquor license. That is done by the Department of Liquor and the Liquor Board. So we're solely making a recommendation to the Liquor Board, to the Department of Liquor, that a license not be granted. When we make a recommendation like this, the onus is put back onto the Liquor Board to, which is a quasi-judicial hearing body, to actually delve into the facts of the case and either grant or deny a liquor license. So this is a preliminary recommendation and it's not the decision-making body for the decision that will be done. I'll turn it over to the Police Department for further clarification.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Anna Churn. I am the Licensing Specialist for the Tempe Police Department. One of my responsibilities is to conduct background investigations on all incoming city of Tempe business licenses. And this includes liquor licenses and specialty regulatory licenses. I work closely with the Arizona Department of Liquor to ensure that businesses and licensees that deal in alcohol are adhering to Arizona revised statute Title IV, which is the liquor law. Our top priority is public safety. The consent agenda item does mention that we are recommending denial. And the reason for that is because the applicant has failed to demonstrate satisfactory showing of the capability, qualifications, and reliability, and that the best interest of the community would be served by the issuance of this license. The Arizona Department of Liquor is protesting the issuance of this license as well. I can provide more details about my investigation if that is needed.
All right, thank you. Is there any comments or discussion from the council? Yes, Councilmember Keating.
Thank you, Mayor. So if I'm understanding correctly, you're recommending denial. If we go along with that recommendation, they still go to the Liquor Board for their license and the Liquor Board makes that judgment based on our recommendation and their own findings. So is that correct?
Mayor and council, that is correct. We are only making a recommendation to the board.
So let's say, let's say that they are denied a license. What, will they ever be able to get one in the future? And what's the process for moving forward if, say, you know, is it a year, two years? When will they be able to reapply?
That is determined by the statute Title IV of the Arizona Revised Statutes. And depending on the decisions that are made at the Liquor Board will determine how quickly they can apply. Usually, it is one year.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Any other comments or discussion? Yes, Councilman Navarro.
Just a quick question. How long has it been since operating without a liquor license? Did you have not been selling liquor, I guess?
I believe, how long have you been operating without a liquor license? So I believe it was withdrawn on, from the...
I can answer that if you need. On March 29th, Department of Liquor responded out that evening for an investigation. The following day, they were served with a cease and desist letter.
Yeah. In March, they canceled the interim permit. Then I put load, say, low alcohol sale, yeah, on the front door. So we stopped sell any alcohol, yeah, until now.
Yes, Councilmember Arredondo Savage.
Since this is a cease-and-desist order for liquor, has the business been open?
The business is open.
Has been open this whole time. I don't, I mean, I'm frequently in that...
Without the sale of alcohol.
Yeah, without...
I'm frequently in that strip mall and I haven't seen much activity there or looks of it being open.
She's saying she hasn't seen you open. Have you been open the entire time?
Yeah, we opened this summer break. So we opened from 5:00 PM to the 12:00 AM without selling alcohol. Yeah, but still many customer coming, but we let them go. So we told them no alcohol to sell. If you're interested in our food, be better.
Yeah, Councilmember Adams. Microphone.
Sorry about that. We're both learning. Anyway, you said that they hadn't shown that they were being compliant or cooperating that well, or I'm not sure exactly what words you used, so I don't want to put words in your mouth. But could you give more specifics as to that?
Cooperating. It was demonstrating the capability, qualifications, and reliability that an applicant of a Series 12 should have. So I can provide further information of why we feel that way, if you'd like. Okay. So a Series 12 restaurant liquor license allows a licensee to serve all types of alcohol. That's beer, wine, and all distilled spirits. So with that large amount of choices comes a great responsibility for them to know liquor laws and make sure they're paying attention. There are six main reasons that we are recommending denial. There were onsite liquor violations on March 29th, as Jared mentioned, with the Department of Liquor responding for an investigation. And during that, five people were cited, the owner and four underage patrons. The owner received four administrative violations and two criminal violations. The four patrons that were underage received criminal violations as well. In addition to the four that were on scene, there were 14 other minors in the establishment when the primary purpose was alcohol service and they were between the ages of 18 and 20 years of age. There was no food on the table at that time, just the alcohol. The applicant is unable to answer or demonstrate a basic understanding of liquor law. And this is required of any liquor licensee in the state of Arizona to conduct a safe business that deals in liquor and to prevent violations. Over the last four and a half months, he has had multiple resources and opportunities presented to him where he could train, learn, retain, and implement protocols for liquor law. He has a total disregard for the law. On the night of March 29th, when a Department of Liquor officer was present, he served, or correction, I'm sorry. He made a statement to an undercover juvenile that was also acting as a cub for the Department of Liquor. In regarding service to an alcohol to a minor, he stated, quote, "I can't right now. Come back later, police are around." This statement shows that he knew it was against the law and he intended to break the law in the future. We have not seen a change in his business plan or where he's made a concerted effort to change the business operations to prevent liquor violations in the future. During a site visit on July 17th, I responded to his business with Tempe PD Officer and the Department of Liquor Detective. And the purpose of this site visit was to give Mr. Dai an opportunity to prove his capability and reliability. It was our hope during this site visit that he had met all the recommendations and requirements, but the following was found. His staff levels were at two, which was him and his wife. And according to Arizona revised statute 4-213E Edward I, a Series 12 restaurant liquor licensee has to have a sufficient number of cooks, food preparation personnel, and waitstaff to prepare and provide foods. The restaurant services are necessary for the menu that the licensee offers. As of that site visit on July 17th, Mr. Dai did not have any plans to hire new staff or train them in time to receive a liquor license. In addition, the security measures or equipment he could have put in place to prevent liquor violations, such as a camera system and ID logging system, were not implemented or in place. The camera system was sitting in a sealed box on the table and the ID logging system that the state recommends to protect the licensee in case they have fake IDs was not implemented either. On the night of March 29th, he was told by the Department of Liquor, "Where is your ID logging system?" And then on April 3rd, when he had his basic and management liquor law training class, that was covered in the curriculum in-depth about an ID logging system. Lastly, the Department of Liquor is recommending protest of this license and we're in agreement with that decision.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion on item 5A5?
Yeah.
It's been moved by Councilmember Navarro.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
Want to vote, whatever.
It's been moved by Councilmember Navarro. Is there a second?
Yes.
Seconded by Councilmember Arredondo Savage.
Excuse me, Mayor. Can I ask for just clarification for the record, since this was a recommendation of denial? Is the motion to approve denial?
The motion is to deny the liquor license. And then it's been moved by Councilmember Navarro, seconded by Councilmember Arredondo Savage, and she wants to make a comment. And I'm going to ask Councilmember Cubey, if she has a comment.
Thank you, Mayor. Really quick, my comment is to Bruce and Anna. I just, I want to say thank you for your thorough information and the background and the time that you took. I mean, I think we all want our businesses to be successful, but at the same time, we want to make sure that they're safe and following the rules and the standards that we imply on all of our businesses at the same time. So I just, I just want to say thank you for being here and the work that you took and the time that you've taken to do a thorough investigation. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, do you have any comment?
Yes, I found the policewoman's testimony to be very powerful and I'm ready to vote.
All right. Can you repeat it, Lauren?
Oh, just that I'm ready to vote. I found the policewoman's testimony to be compelling. Thank you.
All right. There's been a motion to deny the Series 12 restaurant liquor license and there's been a second. Please vote.
Yeah, just for clarification, it's to recommend denial.
Recommend denial.
Thank you.
Councilmember Adams.
Do you want to get it again?
Vice Mayor?
Aye.
That motion passes 7 to 0. Next item is item 5B9, which is "Dowered Construction of Contract to Pave Co., Inc. For the Street Preservation Project Along Mill Avenue From Baseline Road to Southern Avenue." This was removed by Councilmember Granville.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a nice conversation with Shelley today about this project. This is a repaving project on Mill Avenue from Baseline to Southern. And I realize that Councilmember Keating and others have a bike transportation group that's going, but in the interim, my request would be, since it is planned to have bike lanes as part of the repaving without removing lanes of traffic, there's just space to do it, that we take the additional step of adding, asking staff to request funding to add green paint at the intersection areas so that it's the highest level of visibility. And then if it, obviously, the budgeting side of this will take some time anyway. And if in that time, Councilmember Keating's group comes back and finds that that's not appropriate, or some other tool is appropriate, we can always provide different direction. But at least in the interim, give staff the go-ahead to start adding green paint to where we're doing repaving anyway, and we have bike lanes anyway.
Vice Mayor, or Councilmember Arredondo Savage.
Thank you, Mayor. And I guess I would refer to Ms. Seiler in regards to this because I thought there was some rationale as to where we wanted to put green paint, why we do it and why we don't, in regards to maintenance and upkeep. I mean, unless that was always the intent to begin with, so maybe you could kind of give some background and some clarity before we just make a decision that could change our practices moving forward.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Shelley Seiler, Deputy Public Works Director for Transportation. We've piloted three... We've piloted three projects, University, Broadway, and Hardy, where we have installed the green thermo at conflict points. It does provide a level of safety to the bicyclists and our drivers by indicating areas where a bicyclist might be in conflict with a movement that a vehicle is making. So we do feel comfortable with moving forward with this program. Councilmember Granville and I talked a little bit about the maintenance behind it. We do know that these take a hit in terms of where just because of dirt storms like we had last night and vehicles driving over them. And if we do move forward with that, we would just request support for a maintenance program where they could be power washed on a cycle to make sure that they're kept up to standard and visible. We have tested that. Our city traffic engineer, Julian Drieseng, actually did a presentation on the green micro, and it would be on a cycle of about every two months that we'd have to have them cleaned.
Is that in our current budget?
For the maintenance?
Yeah.
It is not. So it would require us to submit a supplemental. We would add this to a contract. We do have a bus stop maintenance contract where the contractors power wash our bus stops. We could certainly put that as an addition to...
Hang on one second.
Are we outside of...
I'm getting flagged by our attorney.
Thank you so much, Mayor and Council. This request appears to be a supplemental request, not part of the contract. There's an issue before the council this evening. So we could certainly, if it's a council's pleasure, agendize that separately for another meeting so you could have a robust discussion on that.
Okay. All right. How does that? Councilmember Granville?
Let me just get some clarity. So the, and I understand the response was a little bit different than the comment, but the comment was if, as a condition of approval, we could ask that staff submit a supplemental budget request to add green paint. Is that, is adding a condition of approval, would that be outside the scope of this item?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I believe it would, and that the contract contains the terms and conditions that the council has reviewed to vote on and consider this evening.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Navarro?
No, Mayor. I appreciate the comment, and I would agree with Councilmember Granville. Obviously, I think we came down to a conclusion. I would like to have a discussion on this because I do think it's important. So I'll defer to quickly, hopefully, a timely meeting on this.
All right. So with that information, is there a motion on item 5B9? It's been moved by Councilmember Erdano Savage, seconded by Councilmember Navarro. Please vote. Councilwoman Cubey?
Aye.
That motion passes seven to zero. Next is item 5C4, which is... 5C4 is adopt the resolution authorizing the chief of police or his designated to execute an agreement between Arizona Mills Mall and the Tempe Police Department for dedicated and specific police services at Arizona Mills Mall. Councilmember Granville?
Thank you, Mayor. I think this is probably the fourth or fifth time I pulled this item to vote no on it. It doesn't, I'm not going to belabor the issue, but I just needed to pull this so that I could vote no.
Okay. Is there a motion on item 5C4? It's been moved by Councilmember Navarro, seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote. Councilmember Cubey, or Vice Mayor Cubey?
Aye.
That motion passes six to one, with Councilmember Granville voting no. Next, item 5C5. Councilmember Granville? This is actually to adopt the resolution authorizing the mayor's designated to execute an amendment for intergovernmental agreement with Maricopa County Animal Care and Control for Animal Care and Control Services. Councilmember Granville?
So it's, this was just serendipity, the emails that we got just a day or two ago. My initial request was questions on it. Was right now, the way it's set up is when someone calls because there's a loose stray dog in the neighborhood, whether it's at a park or wherever, the obligations under this contract are that it's, I believe, a Class IV type of call, which means that animal control would need to come out within six hours, assuming it's between the hours of 8:00 and 5:00 o'clock. If it's 5:01, then they have to come out within six hours of 8:00 AM the following day. I can't fathom what stray dog wanders in the same neighborhood for six straight hours. And so now I understand why we periodically get phone calls about stray dogs that don't get picked up. And then, of course, just happened just by chance that there was an unfortunate incident at a park with a stray dog just yesterday or two days ago. So that, I think the thing I would request is, this is fine as it is, and I don't want to spring anything new, but I would ask that staff look at a system either through the county animal control, either internally or somewhere, and put in a Friday packet as a recommendation, as a suggestion of if we wanted to fund a more responsive system to stray dogs that didn't have a six-hour window of response between 8:00 and 5:00, how we might do that to try and allow a little bit of safety at parks, since a lot of our parks don't have dog park areas. We can let your dog off the leash, and so people just do it anyway.
Is there a motion on item 5C5? It's been moved by Councilmember Navarro, seconded by Councilmember Erdano Savage. Please vote. Vice Mayor?
Aye.
That motion passes seven to zero. Next is our non-consent agenda. All the items listed on the non-consent agenda will be considered separately. Agenda items scheduled for introduction and first public hearing will be heard but will not be voted upon at this meeting. Agenda items scheduled for second public hearing and final adoption will be voted upon tonight. Section 6A is miscellaneous items, bids, contracts, and resolutions. Item 6A1 is to award a construction project for Sunland Asphalt and Construction Incorporated for a street preservation project along 48th Street and Southern Avenue to Broadway Road. Is there any comments or discussion from the council or a motion? It's been moved by Councilmember Navarro, seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote. Vice Mayor? Vice Mayor?
Aye. Sorry, had on mute.
That motion passes seven to zero. The next section of the non-consent agenda is our ordinance and items for introduction and first hearing. These items will be read and introduced tonight, but no votes will be taken tonight. The second hearing for these, and votes for these items are scheduled for August 30th, 2018. 6B is ordinance and items for introduction and first hearing. 6B1 is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance amending the Tempe City Code, Chapter 2, Article 5, Division 8, Section 2-245 regarding the membership on the Transportation Commission. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for August 30th, 2018. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address this under item 6B1? Could you please get my attention? Seeing none, I'll close that portion. Any comments or discussion from the council on item 6B1? The only thing I make a comment on is that this consists, this board actually consists of 15 members who do reside in the city of Tempe. And what we're looking at changing is the commission can include one member who is affiliated with Arizona State, with ASU, and that is not a resident of Tempe, and then also one member that who is employed within the city boundaries but is not a resident. Those are the changes that we're looking at, in case anybody was wondering. With that, move on to item 6B2. 6B2 is introduce and hold the first public hearing item to adopt an ordinance amending the Tempe City Code, Chapter 2, Article 5, Division 20, Section 2-365 regarding membership of the Tempe Veterans Commission. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for August 30th, 2018. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address this under item 6B2? Could you please get my attention? Seeing none. I just want to let everybody know that what we're looking at regarding the requirements, yes. Councilmember Erdano Savage?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, very much. Really do appreciate it. I mean, I just want to give a shout out to the Veterans Commission and the work that they've been doing. As it's being a new commission, one of the things that they realized is they just kind of wanted to be a little bit more flexibility on that membership as we knew it was an evolving commission. And one of the things they would also like to do is you have that new language there, but we kind of wanted to simplify it a little bit because the way it was written was actually just captured from the minutes within the meeting. And it says, "Two at-large veteran members, one of whom resides in the city of Tempe." We just want to be able to separate those, if you notice. So everything still kind of remains the same, but we're just going to put them out. So if that's okay with the council, we would actually read, eight would say, "At-large veteran who is a Tempe resident", nine would say, "An at-large veteran who is a Tempe resident", instead of saying, "Two at-large." So we're just trying to separate those, and same with 10 and 11 being an at-large Tempe veteran or resident or employed in Tempe, just to be more specific and consistent.
Would that, Ms. Valmer, would that require an amendment to what we're asking? I mean, this is only the first read. For the next read, can you do it? Can you make those, is it okay to counsel? Do we have to take action to vote on it, to make those recommendations?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Because this is the first read, and it would not be a material change. It would be something that you all would be able to amend between this meeting and the second meeting in which you would vote.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments? All right. Next, item 6B3 is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance amending the Tempe City Code, Chapter 2, relating to the Tempe Citizens Panel for Review by moving it within the Tempe City Code to be consistent with other similar situated ordinances and amending Section 2-711 established in composition. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for August 30th, 2018. This is a public hearing item. Anyone want to comment on item 6B3? Councilmember Granville?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question. I guess this would be for Assistant Police Chief Carvahal or someone, okay. My question was just, wow, that's really loud suddenly. My question was just typically, our citizen commissions and our boards are appointed by the mayor and approved by council. There may be other ones where the city manager is the appointing person, but I was curious what the reasoning was for changing it from the mayor's appointing to the city manager's appointing on this board.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The request for the change is coming because the way the ordinance was originally drafted, it was that the mayor could recommend three individuals to be considered for the citizen review panel. And each council member could be, or would be allowed to recommend two people each for a panel which basically consists of 15 people. And that's how the ordinance has been ever since it was enacted. The difficulty with that has been for us to maintain full staffing in our panel. We haven't been able to get the nominations or the recommendations that we need in order to maintain a full panel. And in fact, we've had situations where we've had difficulty getting a forum together when we needed to have cases reviewed. So in, I approached the city manager with this recommendation that we are, we are fortunate in that we do get community members that have interest in being part of this panel and do apply. And we do a lot of outreach in terms of advertising to try to get greater interest through a lot of our community groups, through Kiwanis and Rotary and through our neighborhood services to try to get applications and really bring all those forward to the city manager and so that we can fill our panel. But it's just been difficult, the way the ordinance has been written, to get the number of nominations that we need from mayor and council to maintain a full panel.
Thank you. Next item is item 6B4 is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance amending the Tempe City Code, Chapter 14, by repealing Chapter 14, Article 2, Division 1, and Division 2 of the Tempe City Code relating to the fire prevention and protection and adopting the 2018 International Fire Code and amendments thereto. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for August 30th, 2018. This is a public hearing item. So anyone in the audience wishing to address this, could you please get my attention on item 6B4? Seeing none. Is there any comments or discussion from the councilman? Next? Okay. Next is item 6B5. Is introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance amending Tempe City Code, Chapter 8, by repealing the existing Chapter 8 relating to buildings and building regulations and adopting the Tempe Administrative Code, the 2018 International Building, residential and existing building and mechanical and plumbing, fuel, gas, energy, conservation, and pool and spa codes, the 2017 National Electric Code, and the amendments thereto. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for August 30th, 2018. This is a public hearing item. So basically, we're replacing the 2012 codes that we adopted in 2015 and the technical advisory board and also some of the public comments that we received on this. So is there anyone in the audience wanting to address this on item 6B5? Okay. Next is item 6B6 is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment and restated development agreement deeds, a land and improvement lease, a memorandum of lease, and additional documents with Hensel Phelps Development, LLC, relating to the project to be constructed at 100 South Mill Avenue. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for August 30th, 2018. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address this under item 6B6? Seeing none. Next is item 6B7 is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the dedication of land on Dorsey Lane between Lemon Street and Don Carlos Avenue for the use as a public right of way and authorizing a city engineer to execute a declaration and related documents. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for August 30th, 2018. This is a public hearing item. Is anyone in the audience wishing to address this under 6B7? Could you please get my attention? Seeing none. Item 6B8 is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the partial abandonment of a water line easement located in the northwest corner of Tempe Town Lake and Scottsdale Road, property of L. Enix, LLC. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for August 30th, 2018. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address under item 6B8? Seeing none. Item 6B9 is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the partial abandonment of a water line easement located on the northwest corner of Tempe Town Lake and Scottsdale Road, property of Watermark Tempe LLC. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for August 30th, 2018. This is a public hearing item. Anyone in the audience wishing to get my attention? If you'd like to speak on this, get my attention. Seeing none. Next is item 6B10 is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance for a zoning map amendment to the PCC-2 and the planned area development overlay consisting of seven commercial buildings ranging from five to 12 stories on approximately 18 acres and a development plan review for Phase 1 consisting of a six-story biomedical research office and a six-story parking structure for the Idea Tempe located at 1,000 West Rio Salado Parkway. The applicant is Barry Riddell, LLC. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for August 30th, 2018. This is a public hearing item, and I believe I have a card. Mr. Yates?
Good evening. My name is Philip Yates. I'm the president for the... Anyway, this is a huge project, and there are a lot of problems that it has. The access for it is really bad access. On Hardy, just getting into it is going to be a real problem. There should be some kinds of signage that show what it's going to have. It's a 12-story building, and it's a hotel. And then there's other parking garages that just are not very appealing to the area. It isn't something that is wanted for the area. It's going to cause a lot of problems with how the traffic is on the Rio Salado. Oh, sorry.
Can you please speak up so we can hear you?
Sure, yeah. The whole area is going to be downsized because of all of the traffic problems in our neighborhoods, and we just don't want to have this here.
All right, thank you. Next, Karen Gettles.
Good evening. I have followed development closely for years and have had the privilege of speaking with you at many times, at the podium, and also individually. I attended a presentation, and I have a feeling Mr. Yates was there too. I believe we sat together. It was given by Ms. Riddell and Ms. Kennedy some time ago at Tempe Center for the Arts. While I agree with Phil that the devil is in the details, the details remain to be seen. What I found were people that seemed developers... What I found were people that seemed, developers that seemed to be ready to listen to residents. I know that this isn't necessarily what we want to see, 12 stories, but if we're going to have 12 stories, if the city insists on that, then it needs to go someplace, and Rio Salado is that place. This is an access, an entrance from the northwest Tempe neighborhoods to the lake, and so it's very critical that that hardy access be kept open. And that was something that was brought up at the meeting, and the developers appeared to be very interested in making sure that it would remain open for bicyclists, skateboarders, pedestrian cars, everything that needed to be there. It would be wide enough. The parking garages are another aspect, and the plans are, that's a future part of the development, for those to be screened. So while I haven't actually worked with these people, I was impressed by their willingness to be receptive to neighbors, know that something needs to go in that place on the Rio Salado, and hope that we, as a community, can work with this development company to get a project that we can happily live with, that gives us access and amenities to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all the cards I have. Can you please hand your card over? Please state your name and place of residence for the record.
Thank you. I'm Tom Brown. I live in South Homestead, 85284. Good evening, council and mayor. I'd like to speak to some concerns I have about the Idea Campus. Before I get to that, I want to sandwich it with some positives because this project has all the good things for it. It's a tremendously important project for our city's economic health, and I salute the economic development team and the developers for taking this on. The remediation is going full bore, and I understand efforts are being made to help with some temporary parking issues with the center. My concern is how this affects the Tempe Center for the Arts and their patients' experience. The pad, the planned area development, is wide open, almost unlimited in some ways. The first two buildings, an office and a garage, we believe we understand they were presented. But the pad documents show several options and list potential heights for every one of the pads up to 185 feet, which is almost twice the height of TCA. And in the extreme case, they're within 20 feet of the driveway, which is now defined as the eastern pad or parcel boundary of the first development phase. So there's a possibility of as much as 1.3 million square feet, which is again twice, about twice what the originally expected 720,000 square feet would be, and quite a bit over the million square feet, which has been published more recently. So getting into the details, I respectfully request that you consider for stipulations or modifications to the PAD at the best opportunity. First, I suggest that the first building, which was presented and approved as designed, be limited to that height, 106 feet. It's respectfully back from Center for the Arts, and I understand that's the driving force of getting this project accelerated. So I think that's quite reasonable. Likewise, the first garage, which is south of the first office building, is designed to be about 70 feet, 70 feet, two inches above grade, so I think that should be the limit for that. Most important suggestion I have, one I feel most passionate about, is that the tip of that garage, the eastern tip, be moved back about 160 feet from the driveway. It's about 87 feet now, so that we have an adequate land area for the eventual TCA annex to be designed in a functional configuration. The way it's set up now, if the garage is built, the land area available for construction of the annex would be limited to two fairly narrow slivers of land, and we don't see that that was a functional solution. So that's, I think, the most important item I have to bring up. My last comment is that the adjacent building to the west of the garage be limited to about 150 feet so that it doesn't, again, loom over the eventual annex and the entrance. 185 feet is as has been stipulated or been mentioned, about 12 or 14 stories, and that would be very dense, maybe more than we really want to see in that close to Tempe Center. Let me end with a couple positives. The project representative who spoke to DRC seemed to be in agreement that the main entrance, the eventual main entrance for this commercial work, should be the Hardy Drive access. Now, we know that during construction, first tenants will inevitably use the garage, I'm sorry, the TCA driveway. But I'm pleased that there's an understanding that that is the TCA driveway and that even the sign, which at one point was shown to be removed, is back in the scheme to stay, the existing TCA sign. So that's a good gesture. I appreciate that. And also, I want to appreciate, and I applauded the team at the DRC hearing, that they've defined the next pad to the west as the hotel pad. I think that's good master planning because I think they need a good ground floor entrance, and to put them closer would be, I think, a conflict conceivably, a conflict with the annex, the first tenant, and with TCA. So I hopefully, I respectfully request you give these thoughts some consideration, and I'm certainly glad to answer your questions.
This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone else in the audience like to address this? Could you please get my attention? Seeing none. I'll close that portion. Any comments or discussion from the council? I just want to make a couple points, and I appreciate all the hard work that has really gone into this project. This is really exciting, and I really appreciate the residents who have taken the time to provide their input, as Ms. Gettler mentioned, and thank you, Mr. Brown, for that information as well, and also Mr. Yates. As everyone probably knows that lived here, I've grown up here, a lot of people have seen what that site used to be. It was an old landfill, and we're turning an old landfill really into, and we're remediating that land for some great uses for the future for Tempe. The fact that this will be turned into an activated, an active research park is phenomenal for Tempe and our residents because it's really going to be home to the new biotechnology and the technology companies that integrates and elevates not only the arts but also the culture. I think it's a huge win for the city of Tempe and our residents. As Mr. Brown mentioned, with the hotel pad, that's even going to activate more and drive more business. That park, the Idea Campus, will drive more business and opportunities for the TCA to really flourish on that site. You know, we've already approved the development agreement with Boyer that lays out a lot of what the city will be receiving by developing this site, including the arts annex that was mentioned for the Tempe Center for the Arts. With that being said, this development will take a little bit of time, and look how long it took to get the lake to where it is. A lot of people just think it happened right overnight, but really, it happened over 40-plus years. So one of the things that I think we can take great pride in is how well we work with developers and our residents to get that feedback, to really get something that's really meaningful to our community. It's really going to help activate a lot of the parcels that's closest to the Tempe Center for the Arts, as I mentioned. And as we move forward, I have a lot of faith in this council as well as our colleagues that help us on the Board of Commissions, as well as our staff and the developers and our residents. I think we're all committed to making this a really phenomenal project, and so I think that. And this is only the first hearing. This will be the second hearing and beyond, the third hearing. Ms. Riddell, you okay? All right. She did. She didn't say anything. You're good? I think you should, can you? Councilman Hernando, would you like to have a presentation? Okay. Ms. Riddell, could you please come forward?
I will endeavor to keep it brief. Thank you, Mayor, council. Wendy Riddell with the law firm, Barry Riddell. My pleasure to be here this evening, 6750 East Camelback on behalf of the board. We are equally excited about the Idea Campus and our ability to move forward on it. Just very quickly, I think most folks here know where the site is, but I wanted to show this particular graphic to highlight that we are working very hard, and we are in direct head-to-head economic competition with some of the surrounding communities, the city of Phoenix, and even SRP across the river. We've taken that very seriously. The site itself, 17.23 acres, immediately adjacent Tempe Center for the Arts. And as the mayor mentioned, and I know you folks are very familiar with the fact that this used to be a landfill, I think one that a few people, every once in a while, used to go down and have a couple of parties in, hang out. But, not naming names. However, you know, the city had the foresight to realize, rather than turning their back on this landfill and on the river, that they could turn it into something that really revitalized the community and created an economic incentive. So current site conditions today, really the idea here is to maximize the return on investment to the surrounding lake infrastructure and create a fiscally sustainable future. Boyer is a great partner in that future. They have actually already begun remediation on that site. So they are out there. This is a camera that's out there watching, and you can see they're down to 30 feet in many areas. Good news, nothing toxic yet, but quite a few artifacts, concrete, carpet. And so we are actively moving forward here already. And really, the opportunity is to take biomass to biotech. I mean, after many failed attempts to develop this, I know, I couldn't resist. I know.
That's really good.
And to take a public-private partnership, and we really are partners here with the city through the development agreement and through this development over many years. So as you know, the development agreement was already approved, required full remediation of the site at Boyer's expense, required remediation of the pad for the TCA future phase, future phase, TCA annex that will come, just not part of this first phase. Parking, we'll talk a little bit more about, and additional amenities, and of course, a share in revenue, because again, we really are partners in this deal. So I know one of the questions that has come up throughout this is parking. I know that construction sometimes is a little bit painful, so some of that parking has been moved around, but certainly, we're doing our best to work with folks and make it as convenient as possible. Big picture, the parking here is going to be a significant improvement for the TCA. They ultimately will have 300 parking spaces, and it will be up to them how they validate, up to the city, how that gets validated and how that gets addressed. But they have made that request for 150 in the first phase, 300 overall. And I think everyone can agree that the existing zoning out here doesn't make any kind of sense, certainly not to accomplish the goals set forth in the general plan. You've got a mix of R1.6, general industrial, mixed-use, high-density. So for us to fulfill the goals of the general plan, fulfill the policy that we need to come in, reposition the lake, we need to remediate the site at an estimated cost of $25 million and to add employment-related development. So our request is to rezone this site for development plan review for Phase 1, office and parking, use permits for the hotel, outdoor entertainment, and temporary vending. So ultimately, the site will be rezoned to PCC-2 with PAD, and this will allow office, eventually the TCA annex, research buildings, hotel, parking. Phase 1, we know, will house Bard, Beckton Dickinson, as well as parking, and this DPR, I know I struggled through that name.
You did good.
And the pad establishes, essentially the zoning establishes the development standards. Ultimately, the site plan approval is only for Phase 1 and the Phase 1 garage, and future phases will have to come back to DRC. But the development standards are established. You have a maximum of 185 feet closer to the TCA, dropping down to 165, as well as the setbacks, design standards, et cetera. So here, to give you an idea, these are the development standards that are established through the overlay through the PAD. And then we presented, just to be able to show you how this could work out, we've given you three different examples of site plans that show the ultimate development. The reality is, we can't tell you specifically what phase is going to come next, how big the buildings are going to be. I would suggest to you that it is really our placeholders for what's to come in the future, and that we'll be going through that public process through the DRC with future phases as they come. So again, Beckton Dickinson, we're very excited to have them. We really appreciate the hard work staff has done here. It was a rush and a push to make sure we can meet the timelines required for Phase 1, but it's an opportunity to keep 600 high-paying, quality jobs in the city of Tempe. So it's just a couple of graphics to give you an idea of what this ultimately will look like. This is Phase 1. We knew that that light time lighting, that signature along the lake was very important. We've incorporated that here. We also know that screening the garage as part of Phase 1 was very important. Here, you'll see obviously some potential signage opportunities for the TCA, as well as some metal siding. I will tell you, this is one of the options. The other option that we would suggest that seems to be getting some traction is the idea that there'd be large, I don't want to call them billboards because they're not signage, but large areas where there could be local juried art competitions, and that art at Boyer's expense could be put up there to help screen the garage. We think that's a great way to make this project very collaborative and then to embrace the arts community here and make them a part of the project. Ultimately, Boyer will accept whichever is the desire of the council. We just think this is a great chance to work with the community. To give you an idea, this is what the potential art could be as it goes up there. And then just a couple, to wrap up, a couple of conceptual renderings, graphics, to give you an idea of the future vision of the campus and what we hope all of this will become. So you'll see a site here, again, including the TCA annex as a future phase, a conceptual rendering, but you can see Phase 1 over there on the right-hand side of the screen. View from the TCA entrance. Again, these are just conceptual renderings. We really view this as a place that's going to be very active. We're asking for those conditional use permits up front to have art fairs, to have food trucks, to make sure this is an active, well-utilized space. We also take the requirement for art very seriously. We know we're required in art contribution and have been working through that with staff as well. Use permit for a hotel. Very excited to get a hotel here to this site. Pedestrian circulation, certainly taking it very seriously. As Ms. Gettler suggests, we look forward to working with the local community to make sure that that has maintained that pedestrian connectivity throughout the site. And then just a couple more conceptual renderings. And with that, Mr. Mayor, happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Great presentation. Yes, Councilman Granville?
Mayor, I'll just say, I like this project. There's a couple of things about it I really like. Obviously, there's the economic development side of it, but the thing that gives me some comfort with this is it's rare, if not never, that we've had someone start with spending money and then come in with the what else we're doing, right? I mean, I might feel a little bit different about this if the remediation had already started in earnest, but whatever happens, we now have a remediated site. That's not a bad deal. And also, typically, the structured parking comes later because that's an expensive sort of item that, you know, you build to your need. But putting surface parking along the lake is probably the least useful thing that we could do. I mean, that is not a highest and best use, and certainly, I'm glad to see that coming early as well. And so, you know, we'll still have more discussions about things in the future, but I feel really comfortable with this.
Next item, item 6B11 is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 2, Article 3 of the Tempe City Code relating to departments. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for August 30, 2018. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address this? Could you get my attention? Seeing none. Next is the agenda items is scheduled for second public hearing and final adoption will be considered now. These items are read and introduced on June 28, 2018, and votes will be taken tonight. Item 6C is ordinance and items for second hearing final adoption. Item 6C1, that has been withdrawn with the request of the applicant. Item 6C2 is to hold a second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance for a zoning map amendment from GID to R4 and a development plan review for a new four-story multifamily development consisting of 90 units for Broadway Apartments located at 1980 East Broadway Road. The applicant is Gilmore Planning and Landscape Architecture Incorporated. This is a public hearing. This is a public hearing. Would the applicant like to come forward and make a statement?
Mayor, members of the council, excuse me, my name is Jack Gilmore. Pleasure to be here and talk about the project. I apologize for missing our first public hearing. It was a misunderstanding in the consent agenda process, so my apologies to the council and the staff. I do have some commitments that I'd like to share. I think most of you are familiar with this location. We're at the northwest- We're at the northwest corner of Broadway Road and Country Club Way. This property's been vacant for a number of years. It's the old tip-top nursery location. The general plan on this property calls for residential, up to twenty-five dwelling units, the acre. The current zoning is general industrial. I am pleased to report that we do have staff support, and we had a six-to-one vote in favor from the planning or the development review board. Chairman Linda Spears voted against this, because she was disappointed that the land use had changed from industrial to residential. She was not opposed to the project, just the land use. In terms of the project itself, it's a four-story project, multifamily. The units will be accessed from interior corridors. It's very different from what's in the area. Some of the unusual features of this property is that it's only three-point-seven acres. We have completed a traffic study, and have agreed to participate in traffic signal when the city of Tempe decides it is warranted. The setbacks on this property are less than what is, we are far less than what is allowed. And I've got some images that I want to share with the council that help illustrate that. Can I go to the next one? Our site plan, we are ninety units, we have fifty-one bedroom, thirty-six two-bedroom units, and four three-bedrooms. Our average square footage is approximately fifty percent larger than all the neighboring We've addressed all of the staff concerns, and again, I'm pleased to report that staff has been very cooperative in giving us great advice on some of the site planning improvements and the architecture. The landscape has been of interest to the council and to staff, and we have enlarged all the trees along the street frontage. Broadway Road will have all thirty-six inch box trees. The quantity is above the standard or the minimum requirement. Same thing for Country Club Way. Access in the property will come from Country Club Way. We have no access to Broadway. So, there will be two driveways off Country Club, just north of the intersection at Broadway, and at the north end by the cul-de-sac. This is a rendering, I'm sorry, from the, looking towards the northeast. It's a four-story structure, again, we worked with staff to develop a new color palette and materials. The two trees and the foreground are the existing large eucalyptus trees that the neighbors asked us to retain. So, we're going to work with those and try and keep them with the project. This is a view looking to the northwest from Country Club Way and Broadway. It shows the streetscape, and the effort's been made to mitigate those views. Building elevations, again, working with staff, we developed a new color system, and we have a good bridge material matrix here that'll, I think, read very well up in the street frontage. Those are four-story units. We did ask for a use standard permit to increase the building height from forty feet to forty-four feet, and that allows us to screen all the equipment on top, and allows the floor-to-floor ceiling height to be increased above what is in the market right now. Our street elevation showing the proposed landscape. This is some of the exhibits we prepared. I think we're trying to illustrate what is allowed with the current zoning and what we are proposing. The red on top is our new proposed four-story building, and what is below is what the current zoning would permit. The industrial development zoning allows setbacks to be as close as twenty-five feet to the street frontage, and zero setbacks on the rear and side yard. Another view looking towards the southwest, again, the four-story building and the massing of what could be industrial. Another view, I think what we're trying to illustrate was the fact that we are really not that much higher than what could be developed here. The current zoning allows thirty-five feet and up to thirty-eight feet with a use permit, standard use permit. And we are at requesting forty-four, forty feet and a use permit to increase it to forty-four, so we're only seven feet higher actually than what the zoning prenests. It was interesting to find out during our neighborhood meeting that most of the locals that came and attended our meeting were more concerned that this not be what has been developed along Apache and McClintock, where those large multifamily projects are pushed right up the street. At our neighborhood meeting, they came up and expressed their appreciation for the fact that these were setback off the street. Eighty-one feet off of Country Club Way and sixty-eight feet off of Broadway frontage. Another view from the front, it just, again, exemplifies the massing that could be there. I think this is obviously a much better solution.
All right. Well, good.
Questions?
Any questions?
If I may, one more item.
Yes.
We've been meeting with staff, we're agreeing with all the stipulations that we've presented, and then last week or so, we've been working with the housing staff, and that was another item I should have mentioned previously. Robin, Mayor, or Councilwoman Savage, asked us to consider workforce housing. So, we did meet with the housing staff, and we met with them for about an hour and a half, and what became apparent was that because of this location, we are outside the Apache redevelopment area, and most of the programs that are in place that would provide an incentive are not readily available. Ryan did suggest there is another program where if we are willing to work with the city staff and commit up to ten percent of these units, there's a program that allows credit back to our, to Quip or clients for the reduction in rental rates for workforce housing. The details of that have yet to be worked out. I don't think that program exists right now, but they are willing to develop a rationale, a formula that allows us to have it. We've agreed to participate in that discussion, and I've been working with Ryan and staff on a stipulation condition, and I can share that with council members if this is the appropriate time.
It is. Yes, Councilmember Adana Savage, go ahead and hand that to our city clerk. Councilmember Savage?
No, thank you very much, Jack. I just want to say thank you. I mean, I know you weren't at the very first hearing, and however that happened, I really appreciate you bringing everything together and taking the time to meet with everyone, because I do appreciate the time that you sat down and really heard exactly what some of the concerns were in regards to that area, and especially from some of the surrounding neighborhoods. And I think to be able to bring this to the table in regards to your efforts to create some workforce housing within there, I mean, I think you knew when we met that I was not very happy, and I was definitely probably going to be a really hard no, because I thought it was really, really important as we look to the future, that we look at diverse housing opportunities, and one of the things that we really need help with is affordable-type housing solutions and workforce housing being one of them, and that being a great location to do that. So, you know, I will tell you, I enjoyed the time that we spent together, your willingness to listen and really try to understand what the goals of the council are, and some of my concerns, and do what you can to address those, and bringing in this stipulation, this condition to try to incorporate workforce housing. And if anybody can get it done, I know Ryan can certainly do that. We've kind of worked through that in the past. We haven't mastered it yet, and we appreciate your willingness to be able to do that. And I think because of that, for me, has kind of really kind of put me over the edge, and I think that you and your character and who you are really does say a lot. And, you know, because of that, I have a lot of faith in the project moving forward. So, thank you for everything that you've done to get here today.
Thank you.
Councilman Granville.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got two things. My hope is that easy enough asks that you'll just stipulate to them sort of on your own. The first one is, I didn't see anything, and I looked through, I might have missed it, on this, on a crime-free multifamily housing designation. I don't know if you're familiar with that program or what that is.
No.
Okay, then the ask would be that you work with, that you chat with, I don't want to hold this up anymore, but that you chat with staff and make good-faith efforts to determine if that designation is appropriate for the site.
No problem. I can tell you, our client's Quip is anxious to do and acquire more properties than Tempe, so we want this to be.
Then you'll hear more about it in the future. It's only to your advantage to do it, it's not to your detriment at all. And if it turns out after you've talked to staff, it's not a great fit, that's life. At the very least, you'll be educated up on it for the next project. And the other, the second one that I would ask, is we talked when we met about the, doing something to sort of not have a parking lot be what you drive by from the street. We talked about maybe some screening, or some additional vegetation, or something along those lines. Would that also be something you'd be interested in entertaining, understanding, you know, within reason?
Councilman Colville, we did go and I actually photographed.
Oh, good.
A lot of the street art, public art along Broadway and Mill.
Oh, it's a good place to look.
Southwest corner. So, I shared that with my client, took a lot of photographs, and they're wide open to incorporating some of those design elements to our frontage. So, that won't be a problem. I think as we go from zoning into final design, then we'll be working with staff to incorporate some of that. They like that.
All right. That sounds good to me, then. Between that and Robin vouching for you, I'm not sure what more you could need.
Councilman Barlow, then I have a couple comments.
Yeah, Mayor, just real quick, and I think we talked about it before, and I like what you've done, and I think the council members have really said it. And the one last thing, and obviously, we've talked about it, is the landscape and landscaping with the other block, so to speak, and making coordination, making sure that we're looking alike with our neighbors and we're just as potentially lush. So, obviously, making those connections with your neighbors, too.
Yeah, and Councilwoman Savage brought that up, and she asked me to talk to Gwen, next door at the front house, and we did. Gwen has started her design efforts, and we shared with her our landscape plan, with the understanding that the council's in arrest and trying to tie this frontage together. So, she was very receptive to that, so we're working with her.
And Jack, I want to thank you for your willingness to work with not only the council but our staff and the surrounding properties. I think it's a great project, and it's a tough location, knowing what it was as a kid growing up, as tip-top nursery, surrounded by a bioindustrial, and seeing how far you had the setback, I think really lends a lot. And I know when you and I met, we talked about some of the landscaping and potential artwork to help screen some of that, but I just want to thank you for, and your client for being receptive and looking at the setbacks and how it looks, and also the willingness with workforce housing, and knowing that you're going to be looking at other projects in Tempe, so that's really great. I want to appreciate you for that. Thank you for that. Vice Mayor, you have a comment?
Yes, Mr. Gilmore, I wasn't able to meet with you, and I apologize for that, but I really appreciate Councilmember Adana Savage's leadership on this issue, and I really think that to have that addition to the plan with the ten percent workforce housing plan built into it, that's essential for my support, and I really appreciate Robin, your leadership on this.
With that, is there a motion on Item 6C2? Oh, wait.
I move we approve with the stipulation.
It's been moved by Councilmember Keating with stipulation as handed out by Mr. Gilmore, and I think our city clerk has that, and it's been seconded by Councilmember Adams. Please vote. Vice Mayor, QB.
Aye.
That motion passes seven to zero. Thank you. All right, next item is Item 6C3, is to hold a final public hearing, adopted ordinance, authorizing the amendment of a waterline easement located development near southeast corner of Priest Drive and Baseline Road. This is a public hearing item. Anyone in the audience wishing to address this under Item 6C3? Could you get my attention? Seeing none. Is there a motion for Item 6C3? Moved by Councilmember Adams, seconded by Councilmember Keating. All those in favor, please vote. Vice Mayor.
Aye.
That motion passes seven to zero. Next, Item 6C4 is to hold a second public hearing, or second and final public hearing to adopt a resolution for the general plan use map amendment, to adopt an ordinance for a zoning map amendment from R4 to NU4, and approve a planned area development overlay and development plan review for a new mixed-use development consisting of a seven-story building for two-hundred-and-sixty-four residential units and commercial spaces on three-point-three-seven acres for the Tempe Crossroads located at 1010 and 1044 East Orange Street. The applicant is Snell and Wilmer. This is a general plan amendment that does require two-thirds of the city council majority for vote. With that, would the applicant like to make a statement?
Mayor, members of the council, my name is Nick Wood. I'm with the Snell and Wilmer, my address is one Arizona Center, and I represent collegiate. Mayor, with your permission, I'll make a presentation, particularly since Councilmember Adams is new, and although I made a presentation on June 28th, I would like to certainly share it with her, and I apologize for being somewhat redundant in my presentation. I think, here we go, now if I can figure out how to work this. As you recall, the site is an area that's kind of funny-looking, along terrace, it's surrounded by that yellow line, along the linear. I've been up at this podium a number of times over the past several years with other student housing projects like this one. One that we did was, the first one we did actually was the district, and the district is just south of here along Apache, and across the street from that, we did the rise, and then just a few months ago, we were here for the Gilbane Project, where they acquired actually a piece of property right there at the corner, and then we approved that student housing project as well, and now we're here with this one. And, you know, one of the wonderful things about this site is this is the area that this council, as a matter of policy, has adopted as the area for student housing. We have, oops, see, screwed up. We have light rail right out in front of us, the streetcar will come in right around the corner, you know, just west of Row Road is ASU, so obviously, we have multiple modes of transportation, but we're so close to the ASU, and more importantly, we're not near any single-family homes or any single-family home subdivisions. And here's a little bit closer shot of the site. To the southeast of us and to the northwest of us, there are other conventional apartment buildings just like this one. They're not as old as this one, but you can see that most of the buildings there are conventional apartment buildings. The Sterling is the project that's under construction to the north, and of course, across the street is the Vertex. And, you know, last night, I was on the phone calls, very late, and about 11:30, 12 o'clock, I'm looking at this presentation, getting ready for tonight, and you know how you start getting cross-eyed a little bit, and I'm looking at this shape, and all of a sudden, I think back to high school, right, and high school science, and this site looks exactly like this little cross-eyed fellow right there. A flatworm plan area, right, but cross-eyed and just exactly the same shape, except the tail's been cut off by the light rail system. But other than that, that's what he is. The existing, I'm sorry, I couldn't help myself. This project is, like I said, is old, it was built back in the very early sixties, and as you can see, it's, that building there that's on the south, it's more like a little small strip hotel or something, and as you go through these, you see that, you know, the two-story elements, there's no interior hallways, it's all in the exteriors, there's safety issues, there's security issues. And again, these are very old substandard housing. This is through the alley in the back, and as you can see, you know, the doors of these units open right three feet from parked cars, and it's all back alley access and entrance. And, you know, security, of course, is a big issue, because this project is predominantly students, as most of the conventional apartment buildings are in this area. We spoke to the seller on several occasions, because my client doesn't own it, my client has it under contract, but, you know, on average, you know, about ninety percent of the residents in this building are students. That, of course, fluctuates, sometimes there's more, sometimes there's less. The others are non-students, but what the seller has done basically is converted everybody to month-to-month tenancies, leases, with the understanding that eventually this will close. He is helping them relocate, those that are seeking relocation assistance. Our seller actually owns a number of other conventional apartment projects in the area, and we've agreed to assist him in that regard. So, to the extent that there are students living in a unit, we're going to contribute two-hundred dollars per unit to the seller to assist as a relocation allowance, and if it's a couple, right, whether they're married or whether they're partners or whatever, we're going to contribute five-hundred dollars, again, to the, as an allowance to help them relocate. But again, he's very active in the relocation assistance, but we've agreed to help him in that regard. We're asking for a general plan amendment, and it's interesting why. We're asking for a general plan amendment. And it's interesting why we have to ask for the general plan amendment. When the general plan was adopted by this council and approved by the residents of the city of Tempe, including me, this area was designated to be very, very highly dense. The existing general plan designation is 65-plus, meaning it's supposed to be greater than 65 dwelling units per acre. The problem is that there's no zoning district in the city of Tempe that allows you to do that simply by using a multifamily housing zoning district. For example, your R5, which is the most dense and intense district, only allows for 30 dwelling units per acre. So in order for us to utilize a mechanism to achieve what the general plan wants, which is more than 65 dwelling units per acre, we have to use the MU4, the mixed-use four zoning district. However, to do that, we have to change the general plan for a mixed-use designation. Otherwise, we can't utilize the MU4. Without the MU4, we can't do more than 30 dwelling units per acre. So that's why we're here asking you for that change. Secondly, this is a project, as I shared with you last time, along terrace. It's seven stories, 89 feet. The same thing as the Vertex across the street. And as you move away from terrace, it steps down to five stories. We have a parking garage that's wrapped on three sides, and all of the amenity decks and things and activities are up on the top of that garage. Here's a little bit better shot of it. We have a, you know, along terrace, there will be a restaurant with outdoor dining, courtyard area, et cetera. And again, we have the garage with the amenity area on top, and then the project moves and steps down as we move farther to the east, which again is within the instructions that are located or contained in the general plan. Architecture, very unique. We have a very long and linear property, so we had to have a very unique design. On the corner, you can see we have lots of glass, lots of windows. That first floor is the, is a restaurant. We can't see it because the trees in the way. On the north side of that is the outdoor dining element. This is a little close-up of the street where the restaurant will be. And actually, we're going to have an outdoor element where people can walk up and order food. As you can see, that's the element that you see right there on the sidewalk. Particularly if it's hot in the summer, they need something to drink or whatever, they can just stop in and get something very quickly, kind of like a grab-and-go element. One of the unique things about this is we have a live-work element. There are six units that are two stories. And above is a living unit, and below that is a 500-square-foot live-work unit. They can do their own little retail if they want to. They can actually do an incubator. So something, again, to help, you know, hopefully, young people kind of get their start and be entrepreneurs. And we think that that's really a nice element to this. From the architecture, because it's long and linear, we can't have a big, solid wall. So in the middle picture, on the left side, you see that is where the terrace element is. And as you move to the right in that middle picture, you see that partway, it changes to another design. You go to the building below it, that's a continuation of the building in the middle. So you have another separate design, and then it steps down to five stories. So basically, we have five different architectural designs, so that it breaks up that wall effect. And it's pretty quite attractive, actually. This is the elevations from another angle. One of the things that the planning, the, I was going to say Planning Commission, the Development Review Commission, sorry, I practice in other places, too. The Development Review Commission wants us to work with staff to put screening on that facade, and we agree. It should not look like a parking garage, so we're going to work with staff to do that. One of the things, and here's a shot of the live-work unit. As you can see, the unit is upstairs with a staircase that'll go down, and then it's all open with that patio entryway that's out in front. So basically, there's six of those. One of the things that we do when we do student housing is the question always, is always presented to us, what happens if 10 years or 20 years or 30 years from now, student housing is no longer marketable? Can you design a project so that it can be converted to market-rate housing? And this is an example of how we do that. This is a typical floor plan for student housing, where you have individual bedrooms, and each one has its own bathroom. And this is a conversion plan, where they can very easily take out some walls and move some things to convert it to market-rate housing, whether it be condominiums, whether it be, you know, just conventional luxury apartments. But again, very high-end project. One of the things I want to point out is that dark line along the top, that's the alley that's behind there. And where the alley currently connects to terrace is a very dangerous condition because it runs in the terrace at a 45-degree angle. And one of the things that staff asked us to do was, in fact, staff helped us to do this, approach the property owner to the north and obtain an agreement to realign the geometry of that intersection with the street. So we make it 90 degrees rather than 45. And they've agreed to do that, so that's one of our conditions as well. This is just, again, these are very high-end finishes that are here. And again, here's the outdoor deal. Now, because this is student housing, I always have the same menu of things that have to be done. And it's not only things that I believe are important, but it's things that, you know, this council has over the years really demanded of us. One thing is, we go and visit with Dr. Rund and typically Jennifer Hightower. Jennifer is now back, which is a really good thing. But we visit with Dr. Rund. Now, the person we do, the reason to do that is, he is the dean of students. And for a long time, there were issues with student housing projects and management and lack of any coordination or communication between the management of these student housing projects and ASU. And thanks to the efforts of ASU, the efforts of folks in this council, in fact, Councilman Aranda Savage was a big part of this, is getting everybody together in a room and talk about how we can have a relationship. We can have constant communication. We give them, you know, confidence that not only do we have great management, but more importantly, the students that live off-campus are going to be living in safe, secure, well-managed facilities. And so we make those introductions, and we start that communication. And that has worked so well that the issues that arose several years ago with student housing have virtually disappeared. Again, a big part of it is that relationship. We also visit with John Carrier. Now, we've been doing that just the past couple of projects. And the reason is, John called me when we were doing the Gilbane project and said, Nick, can you come and see me? And as you know, we represent ASU, so I'm always happy to talk to John. And we went in and talked, and he said, you know, I want to meet with your client. I want to see the architectural designs. I want to know what's going on. I want to know about, you know, the process, your security, all the other things. And we said, we're happy to, John, but why is that of interest to you? And the reason is that the philosophy of ASU is pretty simple, and that is, we invest a tremendous amount of time and money, resources, and just caring about our students. And when they live off-campus, it's important to us that they're living in high-quality, safe and secure housing. Because if they aren't living in those conditions, it's very likely that not only are they going to change, you know, their living conditions and their location, they may leave school. And they've seen that happen time and time again. So now, with these projects, we're going in and having them look at it from that aspect as well. We also enter into a security plan with the Tempe Police Department. That security plan is extremely important because, again, health, safety, welfare, security, making sure that we have security guards. Now, for example, in this project, we'll have security guards at night, every night for the first two months of every semester, because that's when the kids kind of, you know, come back from vacation, and it's a little rambunctious sometimes. So we have security guards there. And it's not just because of the kids who live there. But one of the things we've learned over the years with all the student housing projects I've worked on is there are predators out there who monitor social media. And whatever they read about a party, a get-together, whether it's big or small, sometimes they show up. And those are the kind of things that the security guards are intended to protect against. It's not so much the students who live there, right? It's those who want to invade that space and cause problems. So we end up with security, you know, we have access issues. It's all secured access. You have to check in. No one can come in and out freely. Even those who live there have to check in and out. We also have, you know, video cameras throughout and video assessments. We have agreements regarding pool activities. You don't want parties and things at pools, because again, it draws issues. So we have a stipulation. We've already started to negotiate the security plan, so that'll be part of the agreement as well. So basically, this is going to be a very positive project, a very good project. It'll serve a purpose and a need, particularly for the certain students that provide a much safer living experience and secure living experience and positive living experience for them than what they have currently in the project that's there. So again, I apologize for my long-winded presentation, but Councilmember Adams is new, and it's, you know, and I get paid by the word, so it works out. But I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wood. All right. With that, we have a public hearing, and I do have one card, Ms. Denise Johnson.
Hi, my name's Denise Johnson. I live in Tempe. Lived here for a while. So I was really happy to see the council earlier state the importance of affordable housing, workforce housing for everyone. And I just want you guys to think about when you're voting on these projects today, in the future, what you can do as a council to help bring in developers who want to create housing for everyone. And that includes students who maybe can't rely on their parents for help with rent and things like that. The Snell and Wilmer, the apartments that they discussed, Rise and District, I lived in that area about 10 years ago, and I paid like $300 a bedroom for a house in that area. And the District and Rise, their costs now are like $800 to $900 a bedroom, like for the cheapest things. So I was curious, when I saw that this was going in, what the cost of these new developments would probably be. So I looked up the previous projects of the future owner, the Collegiate Development Group. And they've done like three or four other projects in cities that are very similar in size and kind of median income to Tempe, median income to the 85281 area specifically, with their project, the Todd in Columbus, Missouri, similar to the project, the 114 Earl in Clemson. And, I mean, in Knoxville, Tennessee, their project there, the median income in that city is much lower. But all of these bedrooms in these places, again, are going for like $700, $800 per. And there's people living there now that are probably paying way less than the cost per square foot that's going to go into this, these new places. And I think the current cost of the crossroads units that are there go for $1.23 to $1.56 per square foot. And if this new complex goes in, the bedrooms are probably going to increase to like $2 to $2.50 per square foot. And I just think that's a lot. And I would, I don't know. I mean, yeah, they could kick everyone out and leave it there empty, but you guys have a lot of power, and you don't have to say yes to developers who come in here and want to get rid of workforce housing that's already there in order to put something in that people maybe can't afford.
Thank you. Next is, wait, Councilman Adams?
Eventually, I'll learn to push these buttons. Anyway, what percentage is currently student, students in that residence?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Adams, according to our seller, it's about 90% students and about 10% non-students. But again, it fluctuates. Sometimes there's, you know, it's smaller than 90%, sometimes it's greater than 90%. Again, because it's transient and because they're up month-to-month now for over a year, he said it changes quite a bit. But those who are there, again, are helping them with their relocation, and we've agreed to participate in that. And by the way, if it pleases you, happy to have a stipulation about helping them with relocation assistance at $200 a unit and $500 per couple in any one unit. And by the way, if I may, Mayor, we're also happy, Councilmember Granville, to be part of the crime-free multi-housing program. That's a given, but I just want to put that on the record.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Karen Getlas.
I believe that this area, the area in question is currently a neighborhood that includes students as residents. The 90% student figure sounds really high to me. I was puzzled that city staff sent a rationalization today on this item, and I would like to rebut that. Technical details which are allowing this project should not take precedence over what the community has agreed to in regard, has agreed to in regard to development principles in the general plan or in any of the character area plans. There has been strong agreement and discussions during the creation of the past two or three Tempe general plans that stepping development down toward less intense neighborhood uses is something neighbors want. I really wish this mayor and city council would, on the whole, give as much credence and respect to neighborhood input as you do to developer input. It's appalling that this does not seem to happen with some degree of regularity, although it does happen occasionally. Surely, there are those who feel differently about this project than I do. And many of us have taken the time to protest some uses that we think are egregious. I am requesting a postponement of approval on this until we have certain other planning processes in process completed. The council should not approve this request at this point in time because the project does not conform to voter dictates in the general plan. The current neighborhood arrangement of housing on this section of orange is beautifully maintained, one- and two-storing buildings. The project does not comply with regulatory language in the Zoning and Development Code manual. This is where the technicalities come in, that allow up to 40 feet in height. Number four, the description of this block from 1010 to 1044 is that there are 11 separate buildings that comprise the current housing complex. They are nicely landscaped and maintained. This represents about seven single-family residential properties in any of the older neighborhoods. So it's the better part of a block. Six are single-story and five are two-story. There is a pleasing variation of architecture and scale. These buildings should not be destroyed. Before the urban core master plan is completed, residents have been calling for this planning process to happen for decades. We want residential scale, and we want the stepping down we talk about all the time but don't always adhere to. We want the city to follow the rules that are in place. And I would ask that neighbors shouldn't be the only ones here to have the general plan pulled out from under their feet on occasion, which has happened to us when you make changes. I ask that you give the same treatment, or consider giving the same treatment to developers. And I'm asking for a postponement until additional planning is done. I'm not asking that you deny this completely, although I would probably be ready to suggest a number of changes. Thank you very much, Karen Getlas, by the way.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Well, before I do that, I, thank you, I have, we have Ryan and Chad from our community development. I think there's some clarification that needs to be explained. The general plan change is for the change in the land use, at my understanding, in going from a residential mixed use, going from residential to mixed use. In order for the developer to do that, to get the, what has been approved by the general plan density, they have to change the land use. Can you help explain what's happening? And I think Mr. Wood explained it, but if you could help explain it as well.
Yes, Mayor.
To how we got to where we are.
Mr. Wood did a pretty good job. Longstanding interpretation has held that the density that they're trying to achieve to match the master plan is not available in the conventional residential multifamily districts. So it requires the mixed use, which allows you to get to that 65 number that he's- that he's, that he mentioned. So the general plan has to change in the land use classification in order to match the density classification. They just don't jive exactly well, so we have to do some general plan gymnastics, but it is the way that we've handled that in the past, so.
Okay. All right, this is a public, don't go away. This is a public hearing. Does anyone else in the audience wishing to address this on this issue? Could you please get my attention? Seeing none. Any comments or discussion from the council? Councilmember Ricardo Savage?
Sure, thank you very much. You know, first and foremost, I just want to say thank you to, you know, Mr. Wood for your due diligence. I think you've kind of really understood the council's wishes when it comes to student housing. And of course, most people know how much I love student housing, but realize, in this location, I think it's an appropriate use, and I think that what you guys have been able to do with the development is, one, even more than I would have expected, so I really, I look forward to that. I'm grateful for the time that you spent with ASU to really build that partnership with them, because I think there's nothing more important than making sure the kids are safe first and foremost, but that they are held accountable for their actions and that ASU is part of that, too. So I think that is one thing that works out really good. And I do know that, I've heard a lot of comments from residents, and I don't disagree. I think it's very important that we work on diverse housing for our residents in the city of Tempe. And workforce housing, affordable housing are all things that are really, really important to me, and I know other people on this council. You know, I did do some background check, and there is not any housing vouchers within that unit. There's zero housing vouchers there. And so, which kind of tells me that, yeah, there probably is a significant amount of students that reside there. And we do have, we just had a presentation earlier today, that we do now have housing navigators. So I would ask that you connect with our housing department, because they do have a lot of the skills needed to help those individuals that may be looking for housing, the ability to do that. So, you know, we're excited about being able to offer that. I think it would be a really great connection. And of course, if you're going to offer up a stipulation of helping those people, I mean, you said it, I will never say no to that. I think that could be a really great thing and a nice way for them to get set off on their feet. But, you know, I do really appreciate your due diligence and the work and the quality of work and the way that this product looks, so thank you for that.
Vice Mayor Kiwi?
Yeah, excuse me, I had to take it off.
You're gonna have, we can't, we can barely hear you. You're gonna have to go speak into the phone.
How is this level? Is this good?
You just need to speak into the phone, yes.
I'm speaking into the phone. So, yeah, I want to compliment Nick as well, you know, the safety plan, the cooperation and partnership with ASU is commendable. But this is one of the reasons why a number of us have advocated for an AHISS, Affordable Housing Impact Statement, because if we had that before us as a tool, as a decision-making tool, our council would see that we're taking 100 or more units, affordable housing units, out of circulation, and we're adding, is it, what, 382? I forget. Well, I know it's by the beds. We're certainly adding, we're adding luxury market rate housing and taking away from affordable and workforce housing. And this is an area, you know, transit or a development area where there are tools that we could attempt to use. And I also want to talk about this division. Sometimes we hear that this is students. Well, students can be families, students can be working families as well. It's not necessarily students who are, you know, first to fourth year. There can be graduate students and families, and students also, you know, need affordable housing, need workforce housing, they're members of their families as well. I assume that when this purchase was made, they knew that there was a conflict between the two maps, the density map and the land use plan map. So there are these two maps, and they're in conflict. And it seems to me, you know, oftentimes I'll talk to my friends of the community who advocate, as we all do, for more affordable housing, and say that, you know, we can't deny someone's private property rights. If they're building within the land use plan, they're building within the zoning, then we can't really deny it. But in this case, they are asking for amendments, and they are asking us to revise the land use plan. So in this case, I do think we can ask for added community benefit, and that would be to incorporate affordable or workforce housing units into the plan. I spoke with Nick about it. He said that would involve a major redesign, because we have to have a separate unit. And I'd say, I'd argue that the best kind of housing is mixed housing, that mixes different, you know, workforce, affordable, and market. We've seen that with other developers in other cities, and I think that's, you know, when we look at the urban core master plan, I think that's what some of our neighbors and residents are asking for, is to have a mixed housing. It's not good to sort of separate and segregate all these different housing styles and types. So I would, I'd like to make a motion that we, you know, I'd like to see this project succeed, but I'd like to make a motion for postponement to understand and try and integrate some affordable or workforce housing elements into this TOD area development. So we have a motion before us.
All right, we do have a motion. I do have a question for legal. Would it be better to have that here, or would it be better for us to adjourn into executive session?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. There may be some discussion that we could have under Title IX if the council so wished to vote to adjourn and go into executive session on this issue.
Okay, is there, with that being said, with the motion that's out before us, is there a motion to go into executive session? It's been moved by Councilmember Adams, seconded by Councilmember Keatings. We will adjourn to an executive session and will be back shortly.
I like, what's the training regimen? One or two glasses of wine a day?
We're going to reconvene in a meeting and I want to thank the audience for their patience with us. Right now, we have a motion by Vice Mayor Cubey, are you on the phone?
Yes, I am.
Good. Right now, we have a motion from Vice Mayor Cubey. Can you repeat?
Can I clarify my motion or just restate?
You can, you can restate your motion.
Yes, I wanted to make a motion to continue the decision to August 30th meeting to allow for us to have opportunities to talk to, talk to the developer about possible incentives to encourage some transit-oriented development tools that we could use for workforce or affordable housing. So we could talk about incentives. So I would like to make a motion to postpone till August 30th.
Okay, there's been a motion. Is there a second? Seeing none, that motion dies? Is there a motion, any other further discussion? Is there a motion, an item, any other comments? Councilmember Granville?
Yeah, I'd like to just speak briefly on this. So first off, where is Ms. Gitlis? Who's been fighting the good fight for 40 years trying to push back the waves. As you might remember, I actually voted against the Eighth Street project because it dwarfs this like, like a little stepchild. I think that's like a 20-something story project just practically next to this. Because I have the same concerns that you have about height in that area. But if you, I had a chance to drive over there and walk that area a day or two ago. It's really surrounded now by comparably sized locations. I mean, it's, that train left a long time ago. It's surrounded by six and seven story places. And so oddly enough, it's going to fit into that character at this point. I know that in a perfect world, that character wouldn't exist at all. And in a perfect world, you know, Mill Avenue would look like, I remember it. But, but, but that's just not the way life goes anymore. I also had a chance to walk the site. I think the, I think they're in a difficult situation because even if nothing happened with that location, it, you would, to make it habitable, you would basically have to take it down to the bare walls and start over. And so you're in millions of dollars to keep the same structure. Well, now, of course, you have to recover your investment. So either way, to make the place habitable, rents have to continue to climb, unfortunately. I appreciate the conversations we had, we have continued to have, and Robin has spearheaded a lot of this, about workforce housing. I struggle with that as it relates to student housing. I don't know how you do a four-bedroom and then put workforce housing in student housing. It conceptually works much better with the Broadway project because it's a more traditional build. And the other thing I would say is I, and I assume you'll do this, Mr. Nick, is have you stipulate to the $200 and the $500 relocation allowance. I've always thought it was odd, just on the record, I've always thought it was odd that if somebody lived in a trailer park, they get money to move even if they don't take the trailer with them. But if those same people are displaced in a place that they consider to be home, we don't have any obligation to them. So I appreciate that your client understands that that, that there is a social contract when somebody signs a lease and that they have at least some obligation to assist in that. And so for all those reasons, I sympathize with the feedback. But I don't think this is the right time and place to, to be having those discussions with this project.
Councilmember Navarro?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve item 6C4.
Second. Mayor and council, if you will remember this as a general plan-
Wait, wait, I gotta, yeah, we had to have two votes here.
Thank you.
Let me, let me explain that. The first vote. Thank you. Can you go ahead and address Councilmember Granville's comments?
Here, Mayor, Councilmember Granville, yes, we would be happy to add a stipulation that provides that for each unit, we will contribute $200 in relocation allowance. And if it's a couple living in the unit, whether they're married, whether they're partners, whatever their relationship is, we will contribute 500.
Thank you. Okay, so we do, on this, on this particular issue, we do have to have two votes. The first one is regarding the general plan land use map amendment. So if there was someone who would like to make a motion on the resolution for a general plan land use amendment, Councilmember Navarro?
I'd like to make a motion on a general plan land use amendment.
Second.
Do you approve it?
Should approve it.
It's been moved by Councilmember Navarro and it's been seconded by Councilmember Arredondo Savage. Please vote. Vice Mayor?
No.
That motion carries six to one. The second vote, is there a motion on the zoning map amendment?
There is a motion on this building.
Councilmember Navarro?
Say.
It's been moved by Councilmember Navarro, seconded by Councilmember Granville. Please vote. Councilor, or Vice Mayor Cubey?
No, and Mr. Mayor, you didn't allow comment on those motions.
You can make a comment.
Just wanted to explain my vote on both, no votes. Just, this is a time where the city can, can join in with a developer and work to bring affordable workforce housing. Because again, as I stated before, you can be a student with a family and you can also, you know, we can encourage in transit-oriented development, workforce and affordable housing. We did that tonight with another project and to me, I'm, I'm just disappointed that we're not even willing to take a postponement to consider it.
Okay.
So I vote no.
All right. Any more, any else, any other comments? Okay, please vote. That, that motion carries six to one with Vice Mayor voting no.
So the next vote is on the PAD and the development plan review-
Yeah.
-with the stipulation regarding the relocation fees. Is that correct?
Yes. Is there a motion for the PAD overlay development plan review with the stipulation of the relocation fees?
Removed.
It's been moved by Councilmember Granville, seconded by Councilmember Adams. Please vote. Any comments?
No.
That motion carries six to one. Next item on our agenda is our current events and council announcements. Vice Mayor, would you like to go? I'll come back. Councilmember Keating?
Nothing from me, Mayor, thank you.
Councilmember Arredondo Savage? Councilmember Navarro?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make a brief announcement that Wednesday, August 29th, from 6:00 to 7:30 PM at Tempe Public Library, the Conference Room A, which is downstairs, I'll be holding another Javah Joel conversation. And this conversation will be talking about trade with Mexico and what our Tempe business, Tempe residents should know about the potential trades, get educated from members that are coming in from DC and also from Mexico. I think this is a real tremendous opportunity, especially with Councilmember Luna, who's from Mesa, with the Phoenix Gateway Airport on showing how the new arrangement of customs and how the processing of trade is actually become more streamlined. Something that takes sometimes weeks to have products shipped can be done nowadays with the relationship with Mexico and customs and trade and the utilization of Phoenix Gateway Airport. It's going to be a tremendous conversation. I encourage a lot of residents to come out. But I think this is a great opportunity to showcase with what Tempe has in terms of industrial biotech, ASU, our IT, or it just, it goes on and on and on via what we're attracting here in the downtown area and around Tempe. The opportunities with Mexico and with Mexico trade, this is a real educational opportunity and I think it's going to be tremendous. So once again, it's Wednesday, August 29th, from 6:00 to 7:30 at the Tempe Public Library downstairs.
Just one quick thing, and that is that seven years ago now, I believe, my sister got married for the first time. She was a late bloomer. And she said, well, you know, as soon as I get a little bit of free time, my, my husband and I will go on a honeymoon. As of yesterday, seven years after they said I do, they finally boarded a plane to go to Switzerland to have their honeymoon. So I, I suppose it'll go well. It probably would have not gone well by now if it was going to. And so I just want to wish her all the best and I'm sure she'll see this or hear about it when she gets back. And I'll try and keep the dogs alive while you're gone.
Councilmember Adams? I just want to welcome back all the students in Tempe Elementary, Kyrene and Tempe Union High School District. This is a fourth day of school back, I believe. We're all from, for Tempe L and Kyrene, I think it's, they've been back a week. But welcome all the students back and make sure people are aware, traffic is going to get busier as ASU comes into, into this fall semester. With that, I don't have any other announcements and I will now, oh wait, Vice Mayor, you still there?
Yes, I'm good, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Have a good evening.
You too. Next is our public comparisons. According to the Arizona Open Meeting Law, the city council may only discuss matters listed on the, on this agenda. Matters discussed by the public during public comparisons cannot be discussed by the city council unless they are specifically listed on this agenda. There is a three-minute time limit for first speaker. Speakers' visual aids and recorded tapes are not allowed. Members of the public shall refrain from making any personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks and from becoming voiceless while addressing the city council or while attending this meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, clapping, stomping of feet, yelling, or any other similar demonstrations are also prohibited. And violations of these rules will be removed from the council chambers. We do have one scheduled speaker. It is Mr. Kim Baker. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence for the record.
Good evening, council. I do have, council member. My name is Kim Baker. My address is 11650 West Monroe Street, Avondale, Arizona. I am here tonight to submit a citizen petition for full transparency concerning the application of white privilege, its errors, and abuse of power by the Tempe Police Department. To the mayor and, to the mayor and council, this citizen petition is submitted in light of the abuse of power and oppression by white privilege of the Tempe Police Department. The petition is supported by the First Amendment of the Constitution. I am petitioning the mayor, council, and staff to require the chief of police to reopen the investigation and look into why the police department did not take a DNA sample from Principal Mark Eastless, Kathleen Press, a criminalist found in her report. A unidentified source of DNA was on the alleged key believed to be Mr. Eastless's, see attachment A. I'm asking the mayor and the council to assign the chief of police to investigate the possibility of jury tampering. Mr. Michael McFadden, a 30-plus-year resident of Tempe, was planted in the jury as a foreman to ensure a malicious conviction in Superior Court. Please see attachment B with the foreman's jury information regarding Mr. McFadden's zip code, 85282, that is within Tempe Union High School District where the alleged incident occurred. In Mr. McFadden's case, him being a white male from a city whose ethnic composition is 5.6.8% black, adding to that the historic effect of white privilege on racial discrimination on jury selections, that black defendants are convicted at an 81% rate from juries formed of all-white jury pools. And his being a white foreman compound grounds for illegal discrimination by a jury under his direction. I am, I am petitioning the mayor, city council, and staff to adopt the findings of the October 4th, 2012, pre-sentence investigation report as their own and specifically the pre-sentence offense, see attachment C. I am petitioning the mayor and the council and staff to require the chief of police to reinvestigate the alleged burglary and theft out of Tempe High School, report number 2011-154186, search warrant number 2011-008116, a sworn affidavit, and give a report on the department's findings. I am petitioning the mayor and council and the staff to require Lieutenant Josie Montenegro, Officer Latasha Hampton, to come, to come before this council and explain in detail how so many incorrect IR numbers were associated with the search warrant that was previously listed, see attachment D. I'm petitioning the mayor and council and staff to require the reopening of this investigation based on the fact that the principal, Mr. Eastless, was issued a written reprimand.
Baker, I'm sorry, your time is up.
My time is up. Last, last statement. Finally, if the mayor and council seek to be transparent with this citizen petition and have nothing to hide, I am asking for a future agenda item concerning this matter be calendared and a full report given as to what really happened.
Thank you, Mr. Baker.
Thank you.
Now we have unscheduled, that's the only scheduled speaker we have. Under unscheduled, we have Ms. Joanne Scott Woods. Please state your name and place of residence for the record.
Can you hear me? I have coughs too. My name is Joanne Scott Woods. Good evening, Mayor Mitchell and council members. I'm a Phoenix volunteer working for over three and a half years with now Executive Assistant Chief Mike Kurtenbach, focusing on solutions to build trust between citizens and law enforcement. Elder Kim Baker and I have been working together since the beginning of 2015 also. On June 14th, 2018, Phoenix Police Chief Jerry Williams wrote an apology letter to Mr. Baker and his family for quote "an error" contained in the June 6th, 2018 city council report following the adjudication of a civil case involving his son, a minor. Chief Williams took responsibility for the wrong and corrected the wrong. It is my hope that Chief Moore will also do this following the reinvestigation of his father's criminal case currently in the appeal process in which there is false evidence regarding the police department's two investigative report numbers. One related to the towing of an abandoned vehicle and the other, the blocking of the driveway by another vehicle. In 2011, as head of security, Mr. Baker was getting ready for retirement after 20 years working with, in the Tempe High School District. He was a person of respectability and high social status, particularly known for singing the national anthem at the opening of all athletic games. Then it was reported that $1,028 was missing from a locked closet in room B11, where proceeds from games were kept. He was charged with a felony and found guilty and has been unable to find meaningful consistent employment over the last seven years. On November 1st, 2011, Detective Latasha Hampton notified the search warrant department of the botched numbers in a supplement report. On November 23rd, she allegedly talked to the clerk, Justin Spelga, and on December 16th, a second clerk, Doris Mofford, who alleged she would follow the information to the supervisor. The department has no records of these advisements and this action was deemed pending. The discovery of unrelated numbers at the time of the trial would have given the jury reasonable doubt for an acquittal. He was deserving of this and in a meeting with Chief Moore, Mr. Baker was assured of her support for reopening the investigation. Mr. Baker was assured of her support for reopening the investigation to hold those accountable for the errors. I stand here today in support of Chief Moore's willingness and the mayor and city council's transparency of a full report on the department's findings. We all deserve the knowledge a reinvestigation will bring. Thank you.
Next is Mr. Harry King.
Good evening, counsel. Officer Harry King. Me, Sarah Jones, and I do have some copies here. I want to say good evening to the Mayor Mitchell and council members. I'm in support of Elder Baker's citizen petition and the close examination of the affidavit for the search warrant filed October 6, 2011. And I appear at most of those cold cases, particularly as relates to probable cause and considering the guilt of Security Officer Richard Leon, who had direct responsibility in handling the money bags. See Pages 6 and 7, Attachment C. When a portion of the money was discovered missing, the money bags was checked for fingerprints and were later sent to DPS to be checked by DNA, as well as the key to the storage closet. Add to the bags, Mr. Baker's prints was not found on them, nor was his DNA. Add to the DNA profile on the key swap, the scientific examination report dated January 20, 2012, found a mixture of two individuals, but only one individual was tested, that being Mr. Baker. See Attachment A. Why was Mr. Leon's DNA not considered for testing for others, in particular? That of Principal Mark Yezz, who received a written reprimand for the burglary and theft out of Tempe High School by Superintendent Kenneth Barker in October, November, 2011. On September 27, 2011, Detective Hampton wrote, she contacted all the security and administration staff and asked them if they had been on Tempe High School campus over the weekend and in the front administration building. In her list of those who stated, they left the campus on Friday and did not return to campus until Monday morning. For Principal Yezz, Assistant Principals Arinando, Glenn and Wilson, and Security Officers Haney, Artega, and Coronado, those staff members were stated, they were on campus and in front of the building over the weekend. Where led, where led Security Baker, Teacher Gomez, Secretaries Valencia and Fenicia, and Detective Hampton, neither listed, neither list included Security Officer Leon. He was omitted from both accountants. Being omitted from DNA testing and being unaccounted for his whereabouts on that weekend leaves questions open about his guilt in this case. Thank you for the consideration of the sworn statements on the search warrant affidavit and the report from the DNA profile.
Thank you. At this time, can I call Assistant Chief Angel Carver Hall up, please?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, just to provide some additional information. This is a case from 2011, and it's important to point out that this case was adjudicated in court of law. Here recently, Mr. Baker contacted us at the Tempe Police Department, expressing some concerns with the investigation. I met with him personally on July 26, and then I and Chief Moyer met with him again on July 31st to discuss his concerns. I was present during that meeting with Chief Moyer. At no time did Chief Moyer indicate that we would reopen the investigation. She said that we would take that into consideration. The concerns that Mr. Baker brought forward, some of which are really outside the purview of the police department in terms of who the foreman of the jury would be and and what influence that person may have and where they're from, is really not something we can control from the police department. That would be for a judge to who runs their court. And so there were a number of issues that Mr. Baker brought forward. One of the most significant ones was essentially a clerical error in the report numbers. The report number that was provided to Detective Hampton at the time was an incorrect report number provided to her over the police radio from the dispatcher, which was later corrected and provided in a supplement written by Detective Hampton. Also, the incorrect number that was placed on the search warrant affidavit was Detective Hampton also called to have that corrected. That is also written in the supplement. Mr. Baker indicates that when they contacted the courts, there is no such record of a phone call. I cannot speak to that, but it is in the office for supplement that that occurred. But that aside, during my conversation with Mr. Baker, not only did I reiterate that this has already been adjudicated in a court by a jury and a judge, but also although the numbers may change, the narrative doesn't in terms of the investigation and what was reported and what occurred. And so at this point, from our perspective, we have not seen anything that would warrant us reopening the investigation. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next unscheduled speaker is Ms. Kristen Schaefer. Please state your name and place of residence for the record.
My name is Kristen Schaefer. I have been a resident in Tempe for the last 17 years. My kids have gone to the Tempe Elementary, Middle School, and High Schools, and we love Tempe. I did, as all moms do, and drove my kids around to sports programs after school so that they could be anxiously engaged in good causes and not stuck at home on TV until it became evident that I was sacrificing too much family time in the evenings and on Saturdays. So also bothered by this same problem, my brother Spencer opened a new after-school sports league called Candlelight Sports. And I loved his philosophy so much, I drove my youngest son to his league for two seasons. Now that my kids are older, I have an opportunity to serve Tempe by introducing Candlelight Sports to our great city. I'm aware, though, of a little bit of a blockage in this that Tempe City Council could help me with. I'm aware that Kidzone staff are legally responsible for the students and their care, and that opening up the fields could be problematic within existing rules and regulations. But not all Tempe kids are in Kidzone. And yet, all Tempe kids do want a safe place to play after school. In fulfilling the requirements to save space or to use facilities in the Tempe Elementary School, specifically Rover Elementary, I was made aware of the vote that you had six months ago about an issue on a elementary school campus regarding a Kidzone, I guess, concern. And so now facilities in the afternoon are not available to be reserved by anyone else except for Kidzone. So that's why it becomes a city council issue, and that is that it was the city council, if I'm correct, that made this so that only Kidzone kids can use the elementary school facilities after school. I don't know for sure why there haven't been other sports leagues try to use the facilities of the elementary schools, but it's a wonderful resource that is not being utilized. And I urge that you look at the opportunity you have to freeing up those spaces for after-school sports leagues. Thank you.
Thank you for your time and thank you for coming up. I'm going to, we can't address you because you're unscheduled.
Okay.
But I'm going to point you to Mr. Keith Burke. I'll raise his hand. He can talk to you about what you just mentioned.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Cliff Anderson.
Good evening, my name is Cliff Anderson. I live at 513 East Erie Drive in Tempe, 85282. I'm here to talk about air quality today. I did some research, and I found out that over approximately the last four months, from mid-April to tomorrow, which is 116 days, 61 of those days were HPA, High Pollution Advisor, or Health Watch days that were declared. So that's over half of those days had some kind of an air pollution problem in the valley. So that's, that's a pretty significant amount. And those were either ozone PM10 or PM 2.5. Most of those were in ozone because it's the summertime. We also have problems in the wintertime as well with particulates. So the health effects are pretty significant. There's a report in 2013 that something like 200,000 early deaths annually occur due to dirty air in the United States. So the health effects are pretty significant for for air quality issues, and Tempe has definitely issues with that. So the irony is that for me and for other people who ride bikes is that you've done a great job at providing infrastructure for bicycling. The irony is that it's not safe to do so on half the days in the summer. The, you know, if you actually look at the, some of the articles that are coming out from the county, it's just not safe to exercise, so they're saying, hey, don't go out and do that. So I think it's a very important issue. My issue and the reason I bring this up today is that the city council has a list of strategic priorities. And I looked through those five major categories. I looked at the items within the list of the five, and nowhere does it mention air quality. So the city doesn't think it's important. That's my issue, okay? I think it needs to be listed as an important issue. I know you do have a Sustainability Commission, and the ordinance actually does state air quality as an area for attention. However, if I look at the 2017 annual report from the Sustainability Commission, as far as the accomplishments, there's no mention of air quality. Okay? You know, it does address greenhouse gases, but that's a CO2 issue. That's not ozone, that's not particulate matters. Okay? For goals for next year, water is mentioned, carbon neutrality is mentioned, land is mentioned, energy, water, and so forth. Those are mentioned, but nothing about air quality. Air quality affects health. I think it's extremely important. And there are things that can be done. This is within the sphere of influence of the Tempe Council. Dust control, smoke control, fleet vehicle emissions, infrastructure, and probably most significant is collaboration. So in summary, we have a problem, okay? Livability, I think, is declining because of the increased amount of pollution. And I'd like to see the council treat this here issue with seriousness.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Mario Martinez.
Good evening, my name is Mario Martinez, and as a cit, I live here in Tempe. As a citizen, I'm here to respond to Kobe Granville's assertion in the last meeting that he is qualified to be Vice Mayor. Clearly, Kobe is not. I would like to point out that there is no, that there is no ordinance that says someone who violated the Code of Conduct two times is entitled to become a Vice Mayor based on council seniority. I would similarly like to say that there is no ordinance that says a teacher who was fired for sexually related misconduct with former students is entitled to become Vice Mayor on the basis of council seniority. Tempe Prep fired Kobe as a teacher after Tempe Prep students reported him for sexual assault and providing alcohol to minors. Okay? Kobe denies these charges, but I would like to point out that if Tempe Prep believed him, they would not have fired him. They fired Kobe Granville. Regarding his credibility, one victim told the Phoenix Police that Kobe is a liar. After Kobe was fired, another former Tempe Prep student reported that he tried to have sex with her when she was 17 years old. He's about 40 years old, and he's, and he's doing this with a 17-year-old. Kobe, for his part, he did not even deny these charges to the police. Kobe, Kobe was not and is not qualified to be a Vice Mayor. He's a horrible choice, and I would like to thank the council for electing the fine Vice Mayor that they did in the last election. Thank you.
Next speaker is Ms. Debbie Manuel. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence for the record. Debbie Nesmin. Come on down.
Yeah, I say send your connection. It's not a big question. Sit now, Jenny, that's a check. I'm a hunter, shanala. She ain't say it's a day. Ah, yes, it's a day. Nah, she ah, Quinton Salt River, Indian community, she one. She a chiney eight cha, Megan, though, hey, they do shandine, dawg, yeah. Good evening, everyone. I just want to introduce myself, just as a courtesy to let you know that I'm running for Arizona State Senate. I am really interested in serving the state of Arizona as a Native American woman. When I take a look at the state as a whole, there are 30 senators and 60 House representatives and less than a handful of Native American voices that are there to advocate for our tribes, our 23 tribes in Arizona. So as a courtesy, I just really want to introduce myself to you. I'm open to having conversations at a later time. Today, my platform focuses on education, safety, public safety in the streets and the classrooms, and then the environment and protecting our voter, our, our voting practices. So thank you very much.
Thank you. With that, I don't have any other cards. Anyone else in the audience wishing to address this council? Could you please get my attention? And I think, I only have one comment. I know you couldn't comment before, but Ms. Janet Garnell was in the back. I think she just left. But she wanted to thank the council for the Marion Quarter Grants for our neighborhoods. And I think we all appreciate the work that we all do and our residents for applying for those neighborhood grants. Record number of applications. I wish she would have been here for me to say that, so hopefully she'll get this recording. Anyways, with that, have a good evening. We are adjourned. We do have to finish an executive session upstairs.